Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Thank you for everyone who is joining us virtually. We'll call the meeting to order. And Counselor Blaylock, would you please do the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Father, as we come together tonight, please give us the wisdom and the good judgment to do what's best for our community. Put aside any problems that we have and look for the solutions. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll open the public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive citizens' comments on a request from Drapac to extend vested rights for NC 211 development plan. Mr. Blumer. Is this you?
I'm going to go through the rest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Board. There is a request before you tonight to extend the vested rights for the project that was previously termed, what I believe was Waterside at Oak Island. The request is to extend the vested rights on that project for an additional two years from September, through September, I believe, 2024. I believe the applicant may be here. Is applicant here? If it... Oh, there he is, right there. So if there's any questions of the council, he'll be happy to answer them. I don't know if there's any questions from me. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Mr. Braxton.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Frank Braxton. I'm with CLD Engineering. And this is a request from Drapac to extend their due diligence period, really. They had an extension earlier. The recession called everyone. Time ran out or was running out. We've got an extension a couple of years back, and now they're moving forward. But they found that with the economy that it is right now, the design industry is suffering in terms of personnel, so it's taking longer to get the engineering work done. Plus, they're talking with various people that want to be a part of this project. And of course, everybody, when they spend money, want guarantees. And in order to get those guarantees, we've got to go a lot further with the design plans to get the bids in, excuse me, as far as, excuse me, permits. And one of the main permits is implementing the TIA. And as you know, widening roads and getting it reviewed up in Raleigh and working with the utility company on this one, because those power poles out there are sacred. To move one of those, I don't even want to think about it. But we're making sure that we can stay within the right of way of all improvements and make this a project that y'all are proud of.
Thank you.
Be glad to answer any questions I can where we stand on the project.
I have several questions, but I'd like to ask Mr. Edwards a question first. Steve, do it.
Counsel.
Thank you. Steve, what has been our past practice with granting extensions? This would be the second extension, correct, sir?
That's correct. And in the past, we have seen two extensions extended, but it's always council's discretion.
So two is within our discretion, but we don't have any established practice.
That's...
I hear that answer correctly. Let me ask about the vertical commercial mixed use. How high would that be?
Up in the county, the zoning reg... Well, for properties off the island, let me rephrase that. There is a maximum building height of 35 feet, but that can be exceeded up to 55 feet. Again, this is off the island. For every additional foot above the 35-foot, you increase your setback by two feet.
So as spec'd in the diagram in front of us, how tall is the mixed-use buildings?
Not sure which diagram you're looking at.
Well, let's see.
Page six in the agenda packet.
Are you talking about the bubble plan there?
Well, it speaks to vertical mixed use. I'm just curious how, what that spec'd, what the height level is spec'd there.
I apologize. Let me get that page here.
Is that number six? It's page six, Steve.
Yes. I'm not sure it's...
Not numbered, but it's a pulled-out diagram.
Right. The bubble plan that shows A, B, C, D, E, F. Okay. I don't think it specifies a height. This is still a... This is like a conceptual plan is what they're proposing, and it shows each little pods, A, B, C, D, through F there. And once they start looking at submitting preliminary plats, then we get more into the lots and the structures and things like that. But my print's so small, I can't read it even with my glasses.
All right. So...
There is no height. Yeah. I mean, that'll come into play when the building permits are submitted also. But they'll have to come in with a preliminary plat that'll get reviewed and then approved by y'all. And then, once they get the preliminary plat, then we can start looking at the structures that'll be being placed in there. But they'll have to meet the standards. So if they want to go to that 55, they would have to meet that additional setback requirements.
Okay. So TBD between 35, no more than 55.
That's...
And each step between 35 and 55 would require additional setbacks.
That's correct.
So less space in the commercial zone.
That's correct.
Okay. While we're still on page six, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm looking at the, it's called Lot Matrix Exhibit, which appears as a box at the bottom, and I'm seeing side setbacks at five feet. Is that correct?
That's correct. Minimum lot width. And this is for, that says for the single-family lot sizes. And that five-foot setback is, you know, one that we have seen used, you know, often in these planned unit developments.
Let me ask about, this is also on page six, this potential future connection. I assume when we get further down the road, there'll be a traffic study and the implications of this development being built out and 211 expanding will be taken into consideration. Is that a fair way to think about it?
That is a fair way to think about it, and it's for interconnectivity for future developments.
And total number of units as proposed here is 719. Is that correct? That's also on page six.
That would be for the dwelling units, I do believe.
Maximum residential density, 719, correct?
For, yes. And that says it's also including any vertical mixed-use units and parcels A, B, or C. So if you've got residential in a mixed unit, that 719 counts toward if you've got a commercial residential mixed-unit building.
Okay. So may I have just a moment of privilege, Madam Mayor? Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
I appreciate that. And again, this, I'm going to proceed from my perspective only. I don't speak for council on this matter. This development, Pine Forest, potentially the Williamson Track, I see a compelling case to have an economic development officer, an economic development capacity. We need, I believe, to begin to think long-term. If we don't, we're going to be in the position of not being able to creatively and constructively shape our future. Indeed, the off-island will ultimately dominate our traffic, consumption of services, and a variety of things if we're not careful. And the moment is now. The moment is now. Once we cross the threshold and expand 211, we will lose the ability to shape this constructively from my point of view. That's my prognostication. And I will urge again, as I have done for four years, we need a long-term plan. I believe we need an economic development officer, or at least a capacity, so that our organization is not overwhelmed with three large-scale developments potentially coming online within five years. I think to ignore that, we do so at our own risk. And I'll end, I'll quote Julius Caesar, "There's a tide in the affairs of men; when taken at crest leads on to success, when missed leaves one in the backwaters." And that's what we're looking at here, the moment where either we are proactive and thinking long-term, or we'll be left behind with these developments. With all due respect, sir, I'm sure you have the purest of intentions, but this is a matter of scale. It's a matter of what will drive our future. So I'll thank you, Madam Mayor. I rest my case.
Follow-up on that?
I agree with you, John. I was thinking about it the other day. What we're doing is we're creating a whole new town, really. And that's what that is over there. And soon or later, there's going to be more people over there than there are over here. And so we need to plan ahead. We need to come together and try to figure out some kind of guidelines. And if we could have somebody who has some background in that sort of thing, we don't want to end up like Leland. Those poor folks got run over up there. It just exploded on them. So I think we ought to have some kind of a long-range plan here to deal with this before, because you're going to have to have police coverage, you're going to have to have fire coverage, you're going to have to have all the stuff. Only it's going to be bigger eventually.
Along those lines, I was going to save my comments till we got into conditional zoning, but I agree wholeheartedly with Councilman Bach that it's time that we start looking seriously at an economic development director to not only negotiate our terms and conditions at the Williamson Track and some of the Drapac, but also the various things that's going to come up on the conditional zoning. So I'm in agreement with Charlie and John that it's time to start taking a serious look.
Any other comment?
I have a question for the applicant.
Sir?
The extension would grant you time to renew your wetland delineation.
Yes.
And your plan, which was originally submitted back in 2020, so we're now, you know, coming up on two years of that, do you anticipate any changes in the wetland delineation from what I'm seeing right now on page six?
Excuse me. At this point, it may be minor change, and we're at a point of negotiating or talking and coordinating with the Corps if these changes are really going to affect our plan and is it going to change in a mitigation issue. I don't think the plan and its concept will change. And so I think the Corps is just taking their time to make sure they're right, and we're fine with that. We just want to make sure we don't spend a lot, because they're incurring a lot of cost now, and all of a sudden, the rugs pull back from under them. And that's why I'm here.
And then one follow-up question. I see you've got in the plan potential stormwater basins identified throughout the property. Would the wetland delineation renewal include reevaluating the number of basins in their location as well?
I think when we get into the detailed land plan, it's, some of these may change and may get larger, and, you know, we may find that a better location would serve the overall land plan. And also the storm, you know, are we still looking at a 25-year, or do we need to increase it to make sure the drainage is taken care of? So we're real cautious on drainage. Y'all got the same problems that a lot of other places have here, and we're proud ourselves for catching that up front.
Yeah. Because my, and my only reason for my question is your main entryway into the development is heavily populated with wetlands. And there's, there's not a lot of stormwater basins allocated for that front use of the property. And as Councilmember Bach just pointed out, you know, there's going to probably be some of the higher density, right, with the multi-use units going in those parcels up front. So I just want to make sure that you're doing a deep dive into reassessing that area and the elevation of your main entry into the development.
We really are. And, you know, that plan is a bubble diagram, and as you get into a bubble diagram, you, sometimes it doesn't work. And when you put your density based on a blob or something like that, and you start putting lots on the ground with the building pads set up, you may not meet the density. And chances are, we won't in this case. I'm pretty sure we won't. And so, yes, on those upper buildings, even though the rooftop is the same collectively, you have more units under that rooftop. So we're still looking at that in terms of where we put the ponds, how big they need to be, are they interconnected so that one main pond acts as really treatment basin?
Okay. Good. I look forward to your new delineation map.
Right. And one thing to address, the gentleman about the road improvements, the TIA has been done. And there are turn lanes required, and we're just making sure we have enough right-of-way for those turn lanes. So that's why we're going through the design, because we hate to get at the end, and we need more right-of-way, and we go to a gentleman or a family next door, and that land just went up pretty high. And we're just trying to avoid that.
Any other discussion? Close the public discussion. And is there a motion from council?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
I'll second.
Is there a motion? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Was that motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes. And so was there a vote on the motion?
Is... Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
Thank you.
All right. Nay. Thank you. It's unanimous. Is there a motion on this request?
Madam Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve the request to extend the vested rights for the phased development plan for two years as requested.
All in favor? Thank you. Next on the agenda is a proclamation. There are a number of events that are occurring this Saturday on the 12th, and it made sense to engage the community and create some community awareness. So it, today I have the honor to proclaim February 12th, 2022, Hometown Heroes Day. So whereas our heroes are the first line of defense for the public against all threats, both domestic and foreign, risking their own safety and the execution of their duties to protect the public and preserve our way of life, and whereas individuals from law enforcement, fire, emergency, search and rescue, active or retired military, and other organizations in the public safety sector come together as our community heroes to aid in the public event of an emergency, and whereas our first responders and active-duty members of the armed forces and veterans are a vital part of our community, standing ready 24 hours a day to deal with emergencies and volunteering in our schools and community organizations, and whereas for those that serve or have served, crisis can be heightened by their experiences during military service, and whereas according to the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline website, people who are having thoughts of suicide feel relief when someone asks after them in a caring way. Finding, suggest, acknowledging, and talking about suicide may reduce rather than increase suicidal ideation, and whereas helping someone at risk create a network of resources and individuals for support and safety can help them take positive action and reduce feelings of hopelessness. Now therefore, I, as Elizabeth White, Mayor of the Town of Oak Island, proclaim February 12th, 2022, as Hometown's Heroes Day. And I encourage everyone to thank all of our military and first responders for the work they do every day to keep our community safe. I further encourage everyone to be the one and reach out to those who are struggling with mental health issues and may be feeling alone, to offer comfort and support, and to keep our first responders and military members safe when they need our help. Proclaim this the 8th day of February 2022. I'm very proud to be able to present this proclamation. There is, for those who want to participate, there is a Hometown Heroes Breakfast, Pancake Breakfast at the VFW, Heroes with an ID, eat free. It's a family event. There'll be music at this event and recording artist Jason Oaks will be there with things for kids, as well as signing photographs, and he will also entertain inside. So if you're available, it would be a great event, and all of the proceeds go to the VFW. So thank you for this opportunity, and I encourage everyone to participate, at least in your, in your own way. Thank you. Are there any adjustments on the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
I didn't mean to look at you per se. Did you build it, you?
I'm fine.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I might have a motion. We approve the agenda as well.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Excellent. Opposed? Thank you. At this time, we'll open public comment for general topics and agenda items. I, please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes for comment, and written comments are also appreciated. You could submit those to our clerk either tonight or tomorrow via email. Thank you. Signed up?
Yes, ma'am. We have Lisa Nolan. She stepped out. We can...
She's there.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Lisa Nolan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, I'm Lisa Nolan. I live at 101 Southeast 74th Street. I'm a member of the Oak Island Beach Quilters. We're a not-for-profit organization, and we make quilts and donate it to different charities. Okay? I'm requesting on behalf of our membership a waiver of the $15 per meeting table setup fee, which is now required by the Parks and Rec Department. This is in addition to our annual room usage fee. Okay? This payment may seem like it's not a lot, but it will be a financial burden on our guild, and it'll impact how many quilts we can make during the year. So the main purpose of our guild is to teach quilting through sewing quilts and donating them to different communities and charities. What some people, like me and everybody else in the guild, we quilt at home, and that's the stuff for ourselves. When we quilt at the rec center, everything that we do is donated. So we don't go there to quilt for ourselves while we're at the rec center. I don't know if you guys have seen the Christmas tree skirt that's in the town hall at Christmas time? Well, our guild made that. We were requested by the town if we could make a tree skirt, and we were very excited, and we made the tree skirt. And I just want to let you know that it costs the guild about $1,000 to make that tree skirt, and we gave it to the town for free. Okay? Our guild operates on a balanced budget. Basically, whatever comes in goes out. At the end of the year, we have a net zero gain of money. Okay? And we get our money from membership dues, which amounts about $1,400 a year, and our fundraising activities, which is about $2,600 a year. And when I first started quilting, I had no idea how expensive making a quilt was. In order to buy fabric for the front of a quilt, the back of the quilt, and the batting, which is the warm stuff in the middle, for like a lap-size quilt, costs us about $125 just in materials, $200 for a twin size, and about $350 for a queen-size quilt. Okay? And again, at our Wednesday meetings, we just do projects that are for donations. We have members that take stuff home to finish. We also have members that long-arm, which is sewing the back, the front, and the middle together. And that can go from $150 to $300. And again, what I'm requesting is that we can get the $15 a week fee raised, because that severely affects how much money we have to make quilts. Okay? Any questions? Oh, Gail's going to come and talk more. But anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you. Gail Burr.
Hi, can I swear to you from the...
I can see this, I can't see you.
Hi, I'm Gail Burr. I live at 500 Country Club Drive here on Oak Island. I am the first vice president of the Oak Island Beach Quilters and the point of contact for the rec center. We are a group of approximately 70 quilters, mostly retired, the majority over 65, and a few very active 80-year-old members. We meet weekly at the rec center, except for a monthly business meeting. We typically work on charity projects. I'm sure you've seen the Christmas tree skirt. Other things we do, I have on the list there, but let me just highlight a few. Last year, we donated 140 quilts, 106 pillowcases, eight weighted blankets, and 80 senior bibs to Military Veterans Hospice, Novant Habitat for Humanity, Providence Home, HOPE Harbor, and Creative Hands Cognitive Therapy. We have helped with Hurricane Florence victims, Australian bushfire 2020 sufferers, Oak Ridge tornado losses, Kentucky tornado victims, and numerous individuals. You can see that we are community-focused, and we respond as we can to disasters locally and worldwide. We are able to do this with contributions through the generosity of supplies and fabric donations, our dues, and our quilt raffle. Recently, we were presented with a quilt, with a contract, the first in five years that I've seen, and some people haven't seen a contract for 14 years. We don't have any problem with the rental fee. We have been contributing that for years. It's in our annual budget. The issue we have is because we collect dues of $20, our activity's mostly charity, we are now being requested to pay a table and chair setup per meeting of $15 or do it ourselves. We already take care of the chairs. That's not a problem. As seniors, it is a health and safety issue concerning the tables. I can't tell you how many knee replacements and hip replacements, back and shoulder problems there in this group. If we pay the fee, it will take about 50% of our annual dues. The fees may cause some of us to not be able to join anymore if we raise our dues. Otherwise, we won't be able to do as many charity works as we have now. I respectfully ask for a waiver of the $15 setup fee per week to set up the 12 tables we need for this group. Thank you for your time and consideration. Please do the right thing. Any questions?
Thank you very much. As a beginning quilter, I know how expensive the fabric can mount up to be. It's an expensive hobby, but thank you for the work that you do for our community. Andy Spradley?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Andrew Spradley. I live at 114 Southeast 6th Street, and I'm here for the Oak Island Beach Preservation. Hi, bud. Let me get a slide up here. Thank you. So the first thing I wanted to talk about was our spring-forward online auction, which is going to open on February 28th. is gonna open on February 28th. This auction helps support our efforts to maintain our beaches and extend our educational work. It's like the amenities, like doggy bags. If you go to an access point, you'll see there's doggy bags. That's us. We've received some wonderful donations from local businesses and individuals, including artwork, beach items. Some of the restaurants are giving us food. The address to check out is www.32auctions.com/bpsi2022. Please check it out. Scholarships. We are pleased to be able to say we are gonna be able to offer two scholarships, each $2,000. This is to Brunswick County High Schools, any of them in the area. Guidance counselors have the forms for seniors in these schools to apply. These are seniors that are interested in environmental studies, that sort of thing. May 1st is the submission deadline, and May 21st, the winners will be announced. Some of us remember Hurricane Calais Seas. Some people have named that something else. It destroyed many of the amenities on the island and a lot of the ones that we put in place as beach ambassadors. It took out doggy boxes, garbage cans, bicycle racks. It took it all away. So we've been trying to replace those. A lot of that's done with volunteer work. Some of the things that got taken were informational panels. You may remember at the Point, there was a very nice kiosk that had the informational panels. We also are putting in some at King's Lynn. We've redone these panels, so they're a little easier to read. There's an example of one there talking about the welcome to the estuary, which explains what is an estuary, why is it important to the environment, why it's important to Oak The Oak Islands Lions Club has helped us put this together, and we are so thankful for their help, because these are expensive, but we want to be able to share this information with the public. So again, we want to thank the Lions Club for helping us to make this possible. Thank you all for your time and attention. Any questions for me, please?
Anyone?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the work that beach preservation does. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you. We get a lot of support from this city, so thank you very much.
Mike Forrest?
Mike Forrest, 229 Northeast 59th Street. Later tonight, you're gonna consider a resolution to close a street end at Northeast 54th Street. I urge you to strongly consider rejecting this. If we start closing our street ends, I'm afraid we're gonna create a precedent. When this was originally established, the street ends were there to give public access to the water. We have street ends on the yacht drive. We also have street ends on the beach at the Point. I fear that if we start this precedent, we will set the table in motion to continue closing our street ends. We need those for access. We need those for parking. We don't want someone to come in and start having lots on either side, and they go together to close the lot. They have to increase it. They're there for a purpose. They've been there since this has been established, this area's been established. Please look at this carefully. I would like to see that you reject this motion, this record. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's all sign up. Thank you. Council reports.
Before we go any further, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules. I would like to make a motion on behalf of the Oak Island Beach Quilters. Motion I would like to make is waive the $15 setup fee for the Oak Island Beach Quilters, and going forward, any group that the recreation director identifies as senior citizens and also identifies as people who would receive a financial hardship. I would like to waive the $15 setup fee. To expound on that, if the Oak Island Millionaires Club wanted to meet, I think they could pay the $15. If the Oak Island Weightlifters Club came, they could set up the tables. But a group of ladies that come and ask us to consider them, I want to live in the town that will consider them. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Well, point of order, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I believe the first motion would be a motion to suspend the rules, and that motion was made, but I don't recall it being voted upon.
Thank you, because I didn't ask for it. That's my fault. Is there a motion, a second to suspend the rules?
For the point of view of having the proposal discussed, yes, without limitation. Yes, I'll second that.
All in favor? Three opposed. Three, two.
Madam Mayor, if I may, in December, the General Assembly passed House Bill, Senate Bill, excuse me, 473, now codified at North Carolina General Statute 14-234.3, and it pertains to contracts with nonprofits. Waiving a fee is not technically, at least not the general sense of a contract, but arguably it does provide the nonprofit with a benefit. Senate Bill 473 prohibits anyone associated with a nonprofit from forming or administering a contract with that nonprofit if they are a director, officer, or on the governing board. You have to recuse yourself from that vote. I'm not familiar with the status of the quilting association. Is anyone affiliated with that particular board, or, excuse me, that particular nonprofit? Okay. I just wanted to bring that to your attention before we start any type of discussion on that. And with respect to avoid this type of conflict, if you want staff to come back next month with a proposed policy for waiving either hardships or nonprofits, we can do that, but I think we should have something objectively codified in our code so we can avoid this potential conflict of interest if there are future requests.
Thank you. Point taken. I appreciate that.
Certainly. Not only that, Madam Mayor, if I can respond to Mr. Kraft's proposal, I think we're naturally empathetic to people who are doing charitable things. There are lots of people doing charitable things. I would like to see, not for clarification of conflict of interest, although council does make a good point, I would like to see something that is a recommendation from the recreation director, which addresses the question of how one qualifies for a charitable exception and what those details are, so that we have some process behind this. So I'm happy to second your motion, Bill, for discussion purposes, but I think we need some kind of a policy formulation that comes from the rec director and is approved by the town manager before we create an exception, and then we are creating multiple exceptions, you know, by default, which would be a concern.
I understand what you're saying. I made it short and sweet. If it is senior citizens and financial hardship, we can chase cats' tails around till we're blue in the face, but right is right, and I think we qualified it with senior citizens and financial hardship. If there are other senior citizens with financial hardships meeting at the rec center, if they come forward, I hope we do the right thing again.
But who decides if they're senior citizens, and who decides if they have a financial hardship? What qualifies as a financial hardship?
What I put in my motion was that the rec director determines that.
So that's one person that's going to be able to determine if somebody pays the $15 or not?
Yes, in the rec director's building.
I recommend that...
Then why don't we just not charge anybody for using the rec center?
Madam Mayor, that's out of order.
Excuse me.
That's out of order unless you want to acknowledge. And if you want to acknowledge the speaker, I would ask that you have them come up to the lectern.
Thank you. Would you want to go back to the podium?
Hi, Lisa Nolan. Again, I just wanted to state that the $15 setup fee only is applicable to organizations that charge a membership dues. So we have a $20 membership dues that we use to purchase the material to make the quilts, and that's the only reason why we've fallen there. We could potentially just drop our membership dues, and I don't think this whole thing would apply to us. That's all I wanted to state.
Can we discuss this when we discuss fees in the budget process, or does it have to be done right now?
I've laid it on the table.
Okay.
The handwriting's on the wall as to where my motion stands, so if we need to postpone it, let's postpone it. But I won't let it die, ladies.
Well, may I suggest that whatever this proposal is coming from the rec department, it needs to be reduced to writing given to us, and we'll vote on it next month. I mean, I don't think we need to delay it inordinately, but I think we need to see it, and that would be correct order and proper process.
I agree. I don't think we need to put Heather in a position to have to decide who is or is not qualified. I think there needs to be something in writing from the attorney, the town manager, whomever that stipulates...
We can come up with a policy, and that's my suggestion, and I think if it... Madam Mayor, I believe...
Go ahead.
Okay. I believe if you're going to delegate that decision to a staff member, it should be in concurrence with the town manager, so they agree.
Correct.
Since he's the head of personnel.
Correct.
So the staff can come back with the suggested guidelines next month, and if you want to take any action tonight, I would just do it on the actual request that you've heard, not a blanket exception policy.
Yeah, I mean, a quick comment from me. I personally am sympathetic to the request. However, there are more facilities in the town's ownership other than the rec center that charge fees for various groups to use those facilities. So I would agree with Councilmember Bach that it would be in our best interest to have some sort of formal definition, policy in place where there's a waiver application to waive any fees of any kind, perhaps, and that's something that we could look into as well, to see across all of our amenities. It's not just the rec center.
Right.
We rent out other facilities in the town. So if we're gonna look at some sort of waiver program based on a criteria, it should apply to all facilities, not just the rec center.
Understood.
Ms. Burr?
Thank you very much. I wanted to draw, I do have only one copy of the contract, but on a different section, it does say that the club fees for the annual room usage can be waived by the recreational director. It just doesn't state that for the $15 a week setup fee for the tables and chairs. Would you like a copy of the contract?
I'd be happy to take whatever you'd like to hand up. Thank you. Oh, I don't want to...
I can print more.
Okay. Yeah. I'm just gonna take a peek in.
We'll make sure that all of you get copies of that here this evening, so...
Thank you, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Eats.
Do you want to call the vote, or do you want to change your motion?
I...
I don't think there was a second to this.
There was a second.
No, only Mr. Bach seconded it.
For purposes only, counsel.
Thank you.
Pardon me.
All in favor?
I'm sorry. My understanding was the motion and vote was for suspending the rules to add it as an agenda item.
That's what I...
And there would have to be a separate motion.
He made a motion. You seconded it.
I seconded it for discussion purposes.
Mr. Bach seconded it.
For discussion purposes.
Okay.
My suggestion is similar to what Councilman Martin has just proposed. Bring back a policy in writing that spells out how this will be adjudicated, applied, et cetera, and we'll schedule it for next month. I would like to see something in front of us in a more systematic way. I am, as we all are, I think, empathetic to the situation, but we have an obligation to get policy that's equitable for all and that is laid out in a thoughtful way. That's all.
I would like to rescind my motion, bring it back up next month, but I'd like to say something. This is another example of our UDO not addressing our knees of our town. We need to clean some of this language up. That should have been clear-cut, but I rescind my motion for now.
Do you want to make a new motion to direct staff to develop policy?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor. I would move that staff, related and necessary staff, in conjunction with the town manager, develop a policy on a waiver exception for hardship slash senior citizens. Does that encompass your motion, Bill? And return it to us prior to the next scheduled council meeting for action.
Can we add nonprofits to that?
Certainly.
To accommodate the new law. Okay, thank you.
Have that, Lisa.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is there a second?
One.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, ladies. We'll move to council reports. Who wants to start? Mr. Bach?
I'd be happy to, but perhaps we should rotate it and let Mr. Martin start.
Mr. Martin.
Excellent. I'll be brief. I have nothing to report this month. Thank you.
Mr. Blalock?
I will be brief. I need some help. They'll always talk about how much of talented people we have out there in this town, and I know we do. I need somebody that'll come and talk to me in a manner about creating a marketing strategy. I won't go into any further details of that, but it's not my bailiwick, so I'd like to, if anybody out there would like to meet with me and talk to me or give me an email, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't have a business card, Charlie, but I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Councilman Bock?
Same thing I often say. I think in March, there's a couple openings on advisory boards, so take a look at the town's website and see if you think your skills match some of the openings that are coming up, because we have an awfully lot of good people in this town that we need to hear from, and they can help us.
I have no report.
Two items. Madam Mayor, I believe the public is aware, but in the event there is someone who is not aware, council adopted a motion that I propose to hold two public meetings concerning the grant from the state for beach replenishment. First meeting has already been held. First meeting had two objectives. One, to detail the conditions of the grant, restrictions, and application procedures, which Mr. Kelly delivered. And second was to provide administrative recommendations, potential recommendations for funding. The meetings are structured somewhat differently than our typical meetings. They're structured for public input, so the council work session occurs first, and then the audience can come to the podium and ask questions. And that was by design. The second meeting has two subjects. The first is alternative funding sources, potential, and the other is beach enforcement regulations and rules and resources. So that meeting will be on the 21st of this month, 6 o'clock. I invite all of you to come and to participate.
I'm sorry, was that day the...
Pardon?
Was that day the...
21st. You're welcome.
My report is simply to thank the council, and it's... My report is simply to thank the council and all of our citizens for staying engaged in the discussions that guide our town in helping it to move forward. I really appreciate the tone and the concern that our citizens express for doing what will improve our community for all. Move again, move to the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. One is the approval of the January 11 meeting minutes, and the second is to adopt the 2021 general records schedule.
One more.
There's one more than?
Yes, next question.
Three, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And then authorization for staff to advertise for delinquent taxes. Mr. Kelly? Do you, do you have anything to?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? There are no committee appointments. Administrative reports. Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Hatton, could you come over and give us our financial report, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I'll be brief. We'll scroll over some of the highlights, revenue that we have for the period ended January 31, 2022. Our year-to-date collected property taxes is $7,184,644. And that is so far at 94.1% of the collection rate of those taxes that we had billed out. So I'd like for it to be a little bit higher, because it will start slowing down somewhat in the next couple of months, but I'm still encouraged with that number. Local option, our sales tax collections so far this year is $1,903,002. This time last year, at the same time, it was $1,533,000, so that's a $400-some-thousand dollar growth. I'm very encouraged with that number. Fire district, it's pretty much about the same as it was. Pal bill, we were told that we'd get $293,000. We, from the state, we got $353,000. So that's extra money for paving. That's always a good thing. Water utility revenue, we collected so far $2,451,795. The same time last year, we collected $2,236,000. So as everybody knows that lives out here on the island, the growth is kicking in on the utilities now, the same as it will for sales tax in the next year. I mean, not sales tax, but property taxes in the next year. Likewise, sewer utility revenue, $2,959,000, where at this time last year, it's $2,883, so again, there's growth also in the wastewater. Oak Island Sewer District Fee, $6,396,000, and of course, that's the paid debt for the wastewater system that everybody's familiar with. Accommodation tax, the 3% accommodations tax we've collected so far this year is $1,862,000. This time last year, it was $1,300,000. So the people are visiting Oak Island. It's obvious, and they just keep coming, which is good. Again, this is money that's for the future tax for funds for the beach, beach sand. The tax, the beach tax fund, the 2%, we've collected $1,241,000. This time last year, it was $867,000. So that's a $400,000 increase. Again, it'll help us on the beach tax. And with that, again, the fund balances are strong. As I review the revenues and expenses so far this year, we haven't anything abnormal, thank goodness, no hurricanes or anything like that, so we'll see how the next four or five months go, and I think we'll have a strong year.
Thank you, Mr. Hatton.
You're welcome. Oh, by the way, this report, the report now is on the website monthly. I was going to tell them that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, counsel. I don't know if y'all noticed or not, but there's some building going on on the island. Last year, we did over 300 houses, and it looks like we're on track for that again this year, possibly, things keep going like they are. Just last month, we, for new single family, we did 27 new home permits, but we had another 24 sitting there waiting on pickup or inspection of the sedimentation erosion control and construction driveway. And that's, inspections are up by 20% just for the year so far, 28% just for the last month for January compared to January a year ago. I've got a building inspector's position that I haven't been able to fill. It's a level-two position that we are, you know, trying to find someone to put in that spot to help us out, but it's a, it's, you know, you start to get to your level-twos, you get higher standard certificates that are required, and the market gets a little, you know, more slim. But a lot going on. We've got some commercial projects that we issued over there at Hawthorne. I think that was in December or, or, no, September, December last year, I'm sorry. And that's, they've, they've got those buildings under construction now, five of them, and things are moving.
How many units will that be altogether, you know?
I'm sorry?
How many units is that going to be altogether of them?
There's about 125, I think. There's five buildings, and each building's got around 24 units in them.
Thank you, Steve.
Very much, Mr. Edwards.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to give you a couple of quick highlights of what you might see coming up here. The walkovers that were washed away during Isaiahus, which I do have another name for it, but I'm not going to mention it. 27th West and 57th West, we have awarded a PO for that, got a contractor on hand. Now, some of that will depend on the Dune Project also, so we got the right profile, because they will be ADA compliant. Also, the Blue Water Point floating dock that we lost during the hurricane, everything's ready, we're just waiting on a CAMA permit for that now, so that'll begin. As soon as we get that in hand, we can, we can roll forward with that. The shower towers that the council approved in this year's budget, with the supply chain, it's been ongoing trying to get them, but I did get an email yesterday saying we should have them within two weeks, so that hopefully we'll be able to get most of those installed by the season. Also, we got notified Monday that we were awarded our 25th year of being a tree city. So that's, we are a tree city again this year, and that's through the help of all, all through the town, and our environmental advisory committee also helps us on that. The paving contractor, there's been no movement on that this month due to the weather restrictions, the cold and rainy areas. But I did want to brag on our internal guys. Since July 1 of this fiscal year, internally, they have put out 275 tons of hot asphalt, just patching potholes, cuts, and also over 1,500 tons of ABC stone doing parking lots, play streets, beach accesses and all of that. So the guys stay really busy with that, and in fact, it's, it's a, they can be busy. I mean, there's, there's a lot more work out there to do, is what I'm trying to say. Other than that, that was kind of the highlights for this month.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much, and thank your staff for all of their hard work. Same for yours, Mr. Edwards.
The last thing that I have is the FEMA project that's getting ready to start. It starts on February 17. Be looking on the webpage for that. Starts at 6 Place East and then goes to the West End, but Mike's been updating those. And then we had a meeting today, phone call. Everything is still on schedule for starting February 17 and ending, I believe, on April 4. And yes, we did go up on our liquidated damages from last year. April 1 starts the date of liquidated damages, so we will emphasize, and Mr. Martin brought that up at the meeting two weeks ago when they gave us the schedule showing that, so they have already been told that if they go past April 1, there will be fees. And that's all my report at this time.
Thank you very much. So old business, discussion of the priorities identified at the annual council retreat. Mr. Bach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Skip the mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Pretty quick, because I've already kind of broached it earlier. Senate Bill 473 is now the law, and it has been since January 1. We need to be cognizant of any nonprofit applications or requests for any type of contracts that benefit nonprofits. Again, if you're associated with a nonprofit, and the General Assembly defines associated with as being a director, officer, or on the governing board of a nonprofit, it is your duty to recuse yourself from voting, and I recommend if that occurs, you step down from the dais and exit the meeting room until that matter's completed. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I apologize. Mr. Bach?
Is that all, counsel?
I beat that one to death.
Thank you. I placed this item on the agenda in the interest of transparency. As you may know, council held its annual retreat. This year, the design was decidedly different, and with the leadership of Mayor White and the enthusiastic support of Mr. Kelly and his staff, and the participation of all council members in small groups, we've produced a different report, so I want to just briefly address that. And I'll, I'll start by saying every organization struggles for meaning and focus, and that is an all-important struggle. What is this organization directly concerned with? What is most important? That's what planning is about. And what we attempted to do this year was come up with near-term priorities for 2022 that were clear, that were precise, and that ultimately could be actionable, and they're set forth in the agenda. Looking at the broader context in 2018, we had a strategic plan discussion. It was very, very interesting. It was more conceptual than actual, but we picked environmental protection, infrastructure development, and economic development as the long-term themes that we needed to be concerned with. And as you see in the goals here, solving the beach problem, dealing with rec, which is really an infrastructure issue, safety, sidewalks, and coordination, also an infrastructure issue, those themes continue. And I'm going to let my fellow council colleagues, if they wish to address the individual strategic priority that they participated in, please do so, beginning with you, Madam Mayor, if you'd like to comment on the group that you were in.
You're assuming I can remember which group I was in.
It's in the agenda on 31, conveniently.
It was me and you and Hatton.
Well, I know that we were together.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
So I just appreciated the opportunity to work with staff and council on a specific agenda item. Each priority had goals, and you'll see those listed as well, goals and then objectives. So each priority has specific objectives. I just want to say that the objectives are still wet ink. They are to be revisited in a second retreat day, which will focus on reviewing and editing the, the objectives for each of the priorities and affirming those before we move forward to hear reports from each of the administrative, I lost the word, administrative departments for budgetary items, and then the remainder of the meeting will focus on long-term goals, things that we may initiate in this fiscal year but have a longer focus. So just to let you know, that date is still to be determined. We need to match calendars, council members, to find that time on, that we can all meet. But the, for Parks and Rec, we had a goal and a very specific purpose, and then we wanted to focus more globally on the, as an inventory of what the town has and what the town needs in the way of structures and programs to come up with a task list of specifically facility needs that will inform, potentially, an architect's plan, so it's not too soon to begin to think about a new rec center. That certainly is in our future. I'm hoping that we can find the grant money to, to make that happen. Other than that, it's, there's a brochure that you might be familiar with, Oak Island A Time to Coast, and that brochure will include golf cart routes. Many of you are concerned about golf carts on Oak Island Drive. We, we did have a healthy discussion about how we might increase our educational efforts to have, to encourage safer practices for golf carts, especially during the season. Do you have anything to add?
You did a fine job.
Mr. Hatton? I'm good at paraphrasing what's on paper. Mr. Bach, do you want to talk about public safety?
Well, I'm going to let Mr. Craft and Mr. Martin talk about the beach issues.
Absolutely. Mr. Craft, do you want to?
I'll go first.
Do you want to talk, or I'll follow up?
I'll go ahead and go first. We were talking about sand nourishment, how to get there, what to do with the $20 million gift, how to find our own $20 million. What do we do now that we find ourselves with a $20 million gift? We kicked around all the, the questions and the answers and what have you. One of the things we also addressed was enforcement of the rules that we have now on walking on the dunes and what have you. But our bottom line, the whole time that we were sitting there coming up with answers, was we need to find money. Now, how do we do that without reaching into our neighbors' and our taxpayers' bill votes? And that was, that was our first concern. And I made the statement, we didn't come this far just to come this far. We need to make it happen, but we also need to honor our friends and neighbors. So that was my position through it all, and that's where, that was the speech I was giving. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Craft. Just to add to what Bill was saying, we defined the objectives with a common goal around no sand assessment. You know, we had pledged no assessments during the campaign season, and the prior town council rescinded that at their December old business, so we celebrated that in December, but then January came, and so it's time to get to work. So we continue to move forward, making sure we keep assessments off of the, off the table. I would also like to point out that in the agenda packet, it says beach issues. We did discuss quite heavily with Mr. Kelly and his active participation on new words to describe our effort. We talked about conservation, we talked about preservation. Mr. Kelly provided a very lengthy definition of preservation, and so we tried to adopt a portion of that as kind of our mission statement. But I want you to, to understand that a lot of the conversations surrounded words like protect and control. So as Councilmember Craft pointed out, enforcement is going to be a significant topic as we move forward. Once nourishment has been completed, protect and control are key words on the preserving the beach area and the amenity that we all enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Blalock, would you like to address public safety and accessibility?
Yes, as you know, this is a passion of mine, has been for a long time. We discussed the fact that we, we need to come up with a way to improve the relationship between the police department, the fire department, and its citizens. I have said many times that the best resource a police department has is the citizens of the town. Um... We are concerned about the public safety issue of having sidewalks, so forth and so on. My patrol car that I had many years ago had a scuff mark on the front of the license plate. That was where at 58th Street, where the sidewalk and the intersection come together, they don't match up. And this young man on a bicycle hit my patrol car. And he waved at me and kept on going. So... But that is an example, that if you go up that intersection and look at it, it doesn't match up. So we need to look at ways to get around town that really don't put our lives in danger. Traffic study, locations of crosswalks, we've talked about that many times. It's a definite need for that. Streetscapes. This is something that... I don't know how many of you are familiar with the broken window theory. The broken window theory says something along the lines of, if you have a building and it sits empty, and the windows are not broken, there's nobody lives there, nobody's there, but the windows aren't broken. If I go down and break one window, research shows that within a week or two, every window is broken. Now, this comes into the streetscape thing. When you come into this town and you see what the town looks like, you see what's on the streets, it sends a message, not only to the people who visit here, but the people who come here to do less-than-honorable deeds. It indicates to them psychologically that you don't care. So we need to look at that. We need to kind of get... Work with the businesses and try to improve the streetscape. Councilman Bach?
Oh, yeah, there was considerable interest in looking at greenway projects and developing safer streets, as Charlie indicated, better signage, getting a commitment to put in sidewalks, which then is the predicate to get DOT to put crosswalks in. We have major safety issues here in the summer, let alone throughout the full year. So I see two of these goals as being in the infrastructure portion of the original strategic plan, and obviously, the beach is an environmental issue. Just by way of closure, the plethora of tasks that we have, you know, streets, the developmental city, all of those continue. But the whole point of having a strategic view is you lift yourself out of the ordinary and you look at some discrete things that can be accomplished this year. That's where the resources and the focus goes. And that's how value is added to the equation. So there's an old saying, that if everything's important, nothing's important. So this is saying, these three things are important, beginning with the beach, the most important issue from my point of view. But obviously, recreation, central issue. Safety and infrastructure, central issue. And so we continue. I felt this was, in the five years that I've been on council, by far the best retreat in terms of participation, in terms of generation of ideas. And I think, as everyone has indicated, there's more work to do. A lot of these goals and objectives need to be refined. What is exciting is the next meeting is going to take a longer-term look. And whether that's a three-year horizon or a five-year horizon, that gives you a way to extend the plan further. So look forward to that. It's date to be determined. And I thank my colleagues for their efforts. Thank you for articulating the vision.
Thank you, everyone, for your reports. The objectives, you know, it's very difficult after 12 months of work, I think, both for the staff and for the council, to have a yardstick to measure how well any of us individually or collectively have performed. And that becomes very difficult, then, to communicate to you or public what we have accomplished with all of the effort. So to have specific goals and objectives that then can be drilled down more specifically to the task level gives our council and our staff a measure of accountability that we're able to come back to the community and say, this is what we planned to do, and this is what we actually got done. There may be reasons why we didn't get to complete a task. It doesn't make it any more or less important, or why we, in effect, have altered a task. But I think it's always good to have a report card and to have a yardstick to perform to. And I'm excited about having specific measures against which we can all hold ourselves collectively accountable. So I appreciate that very much. Next agenda item is consideration of proposed amendments for the UDO regarding conditional zoning. Mr. Edwards, is this you or Mr. McLean? Okay. Wes?
Madam Mayor, counsel, thank you again for having me here tonight. I'm here to discuss further the item of conditional zoning and the proposal that's before you. I will just briefly rehash where we are. This is an amendment that was brought forth based on discussion with the planning board and desires to have an additional tool in the toolbox, if you will, for approving future developments. This was discussed over the course of five months, and ultimately recommended for approval subject to a number of items that the planning board and staff worked on to make sure it aligned more closely with the desires of the town. The key distinction here is conditional zoning is a legislative approval process that brings forth broad public input, and there's not necessarily limitations on the way that folks can participate versus how projects typically are done and granted with conditions. Those are through the quasi-judicial process, which is a much more constrained process subject to state statutes and other limitations for public participation. With that being said, there's been... Yes, sir.
Can I just add something? Not only is that process more involved, and it does limit who can participate, but if the applicant puts forth uncontroverted evidence that it meets the criteria, you have to issue those permits. That's not the case in the legislative function that Wes is talking about here.
And I think that's a critical... That's a critical point. We've seen some of our local governments move from requiring special use permits, that would be the quasi-judicial process for certain development types, and require instead a conditional zoning process so that you have more authority, or let me say, latitude, for approving or denying a particular proposal. As counsel there stated, he's exactly correct, that you are in a quasi-judicial process, if the burden has been met for these... For a proposal, you are subject to approve that particular proposal. If you deny it, you'll likely find yourself in court, and you will, with pretty good degree of certainty, find yourself losing...
Hey.
Oh, sorry. Well, yes. I forgot. But so... As there's a great deal of examples of just that that have occurred in our region. So with that, I will turn it over to you all. There's been some additional information added in there from some of our local governments in our region, and the fact that, you know, we've got a good deal of local governments in North Carolina now using this tool and feel like it is effective. That is not to say that this board needs to proceed with it. So if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. So what I hear is that conditional zoning would give the town more flexibility and be able to work together with a developer to create a community that both agree would be an asset to the town. Is that...
Yes, ma'am. That's the theoretical framework. Yes, that's correct.
I'll say the elephant in the room. It gives you control. I mean, latitude's nice and flexible, but it really puts exponentially more control in the council's hands.
Thank you. Discussion?
Well, I'd like to thank Wes for providing the additional information. And I'll begin where I left off the last time. There are risks and rewards here. I think the rewards, the potential benefits, are greater than the risks. And I think that's due in part to the planning board, putting all the guardrails in place that they did. So I'm going to sing their praises one more time. But remind council that future councils could change all of that. So that's the ultimate risk here. The next election, suddenly, it's applied to the island. It's not an off-island issue. It can be. So we need to be very cognizant of that. The other point that I got from your feedback, Wes, and I think you'll agree with this, conditional zoning works best when you have sophisticated analysis and detailed planning so that when you commit to the agreement, the site-specific agreement, it is truly a win-win for the town. So, you know, one of the questions I had, which I've already stated earlier, is whether we have the bandwidth to really pull that off. That's just a comment. Two questions directly, having said all of that. Can conditional zoning be applied retroactively? Can someone currently in a zoning commitment, so to speak, say, well, I'd like to change my zoning, and I want to do it in a conditional zoning way? Is that permissible?
Yeah.
That's, you know...
If the applicant applies...
That's...
If the property owner applies, we can't... You can't force it. I don't mean to step in front of you.
No, you're fine. You can't force it, as Brian alluded to, but, you know, you would think of it as an entirely new development approval. So someone would have a development approval or something. If they wanted to scrap it, or things weren't working out, they could come through here and go through the entire process, being subject to all the conditions and all the procedures.
They can request it, but we can deny it. We don't have to agree to conditional zoning.
Absolutely.
If they said, I don't like low density anymore, I want to build a high-rise, we could say, sorry, we're not interested.
100%.
Exactly. Okay. That's what I'm trying to establish.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And the conditional zoning agreement, which I presume would be reduced to writing, right, counsel?
Yes.
It's actually an approval.
Okay. It's reduced to writing.
Right, yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
And it therefore cannot be modified? It's invalid at that point? Or can it be modified?
The only way that could be modified is back through this board proceeding with the entire process once again. Unless it's one of those minor modifications, they're shifting, you know, something that is... No one driving by would ever know the difference, for example, to give you...
Yeah, they're covered by the planning board guardrails. But my point is, if we have an agreement that's reduced to writing, it cannot be changed.
Not except going through the entire process again.
All right. Thank you.
Which would entail another round of public input.
Correct.
Correct.
Wes, on the checks and balances, sir. Prior to a contract being signed off on, it is brought to the town's attorney prior to signing?
So I believe you're referring perhaps to the conditions? And so the... It may be that we're... You're in a meeting, and you are on the fly establishing the last-minute conditions, and Lisa is furiously writing down these items. Ultimately, that ordinance document is approved, that ordinance, essentially creating those conditions, is approved that evening. It is finalized in text for signature at a later date. But it is memorialized by the actual meeting at which it is adopted and approved. Does that make sense? And certainly...
And it's indexed to a site plan. And then the only difference would be conditions you add to it, it would be reduced to writing, generally would have approved as deformed, to answer your question, by the town attorney. But that's after...
All the terms are agreed to.
Yes, sir. And after the council votes.
And if I think that... And perhaps maybe what you're getting at is if there is a legal question, can the town ask this? Are we allowed to do this? The hope is that some of those items will be brought forth to counsel, to legal counsel, prior to that meeting. And so that there would be... He would be able to render some type of advice to you all. Or in the event that no one was comfortable, then that item could be continued to the next meeting, for example.
Is the conditional zoning contract agreed to by the planning department? Or is it finally brought to the council before it's finalized?
This board is the final say. So the conditions are approved final by you all. And then it's up to staff to enforce those items.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions?
Just one comment from me. I guess it's a losing battle on this end for me. I'm in favor of conditional zoning, but I still see that we have that minimum 25-acre contiguous tract for residential parcel to come to conditional use zoning. I just would have liked to have seen us lower that number, but you know what? Let's roll with it the way we have it, and let's see what happens. I just think there may be some smaller contiguous tracks out there that may want to leverage conditional use, or maybe we would want to leverage conditional use as a tool to work with them. But for now, we'll go with the 25-acre minimum.
Thank you, sir. And I will add a comment that I'm not sure what direction you all are going to go on this, but you do still have PUD in your ordinance. So I think that, you know, there perhaps needs to be some consideration of directing the planning board to look at, do we need to take out PUD as an option so that folks actually use this versus going the PUD route and not having to do a public input meeting and all these other items to help achieve what I believe it is that you want out of conditional zoning? And so it occurred to me to bring that to your attention.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. When I can find it. I make a motion to...
37.
Thank you. So many pages here. Make a motion to adopt the amendments to Section 4.7, Establishment of vested Rights, comma, Section 4.9, Conditional Zoning Procedure, comma, Section 8-14.
That...
That's deleted.
Yes, that number is incorrect.
14 is deleted.
Okay. Do you want to amend it?
Yes, if it would just be, adopt the amendments, we can just say to adopt conditional zoning as presented.
Make the motion to adopt conditional zoning as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Mr. McLeod, do you need them... I'm sorry. Do you need them to adopt the consistency statement as well?
Yes, ma'am, just...
Okay. I apologize. You need a separate motion to adopt the associated plan consistency statement.
I'm already worn out from the first one.
I know.
You need something that is inaccurate.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, madam.
You've gotten me tickled now. I make a motion to adopt the... What am I adopting?
The associated plan consistency statement.
As presented.
Madam Mayor, you just have to say it.
I got it.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much. It has passed.
Can we...
That needs to be amended.
Do we need a break? Please. Do we have to have a motion to take a break?
You just call for recess.
Oh, you do. As chair, you can call for recess.
And we'll call for a 10-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene. Thank you. So we'll resume the meeting, bring it back to order. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of the Phase II Moffitt and Nickel contract. I wanted to try to bring this contract into context. And the... Mr. Martin worked with Mr. Kelly and I in creating an executive summary for the overall beach management plan. Mr. Kelly and I in creating an executive summary for the overall beach management plan. It begins on page 48 to 51. If you were to look at the agenda packet online, I believe there might have been some copies on the table. But I think it's important that we kind of understand that the FEMA projects, which, the second of which starts on February 17th to finish on the 4th for putting sand on the West End, the first one was completed before the, well, I guess back last spring, is that right? And those are two separate, those two FEMA projects are separate from the project that the stage, that has three stages, and this is what we're calling the nourishment plan. Stage one has already been completed, and it's also basically been paid for. Stage two is where we are in this contract, and it's, stage two is the legwork needed to do the geological studies, is that an appropriate reference? Taking core samples to find sand that's appropriate to put on our beach, as well as finding sand sources that we're able to permit to ensure that we'll have sand sources for the distant future, so that we're not, if we decide to re-nourish the beach at some point down the road, that that sand will already have access to that as long as the studies align. So, no sand, putting sand on the beach is stage three of that contract, and that is not what we're voting on tonight. There is nothing in the contract that we're, that is being discussed tonight that obligates us to stage three. And then I also want to make sure that it's understood that even after stage three, which is adding sand to the beach, when that contract comes up for discussion, and if that's approved and we follow through with that as a town, that is separate and distinctly different, it will, it will set the stage where we're able to apply to be a federally, the FEMA engineered beach, but that application process is distinctly separate and is yet another point in the decision-making as to whether the town wants to move forward at that stage, and we'll discuss more in detail about that as we move down the line. But I just want to make sure that everyone understands that this stage-two contract that's in front of us this evening is to do the work that will prepare us to move forward in placing sand on the beach, but it doesn't obligate us to that step. So, all of these things are serially aligned to be able to put sand on our beach in a way that will extend the beach and protect the berms that the FEMA projects allowed us to place there. So, I just don't want misinformation to continue across the community and to have you understand what is, in fact, we're discussing tonight and which we'll consider for approval. So with that, is there a discussion from council?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. If you'd like me to start, I'd be happy to start. These are really from Mr. Martin. I wonder if you might, just for a moment, we have been in discussion, of course, and you've been very gracious about responding, and so, on page 47, I don't know if you have the text. Do you have the text in front of you?
I don't have the booklet.
It would help if you did.
Yeah, let me. Okay, 47?
Yeah, this was written by town management, but to the extent it's true, I'd like you to just comment. So, you have add, I'm in the one, two, third sentence, Moffett-Nichols added additional alternative analyses, prensed, non-engineered beach ones, as well as the development of a vegetative plant. True, correct?
That's correct.
Can you elaborate on what these new analyses are? Like, what are the things that you've looked at based on our conversation?
Sure. So, again, you know, as part of what we're going to now, as the mayor said, we're mainly two things, a lot more field work to go find the material, and then supplementing our engineering analysis and then moving into the environmental EIS process to, you know, so that we provide the agency something to look at as we're looking at using frying pan shoals, we're looking at what we want to do with the La Cuisson Inlet. So, you know, some of the other options that we are including in this analysis are looking at, as you said, the non-engineered beach options. We want to have enough covered with this analysis so that we can pick and choose, and the county, or, excuse me, the town can pick and choose how you want to move forward once we get to that point down the road, as the mayor said. So, we're looking at things about, okay, you know, if the town decides to move forward with a $40 million, or with that large of a project, you know, what could that entail? If the bids come back higher, we should also have some other things to look at, such as maybe a certain portion of the beach, and then we utilize some delta projects with the core to maybe take care of the east end and the west end with the AIWW. There's discussions, or what other things we'll look at is, you know, what level of storm event or what level of protection the council would like to move forward with. And the other thing is, after we get through some of this, you know, one of the big things that we have is, we need to get some sand back into the system so we can really start working with nature, and we're starting to have some discussions with the agencies about some of the options, such as nearshore berms, sand placements to kind of move the material further offshore. So, again, some of those options, maybe even if we can't do it for the first project, depending on what the agencies tell us, and just the timelines and how that may do, because those kind of projects, at least to date, in the nearshore areas have not really been used in North Carolina, but we're bringing all those things up to see what, not only can we do now, but also maybe what we can do in the future.
And we had discussion at the last, during our last conversation about artificial dunes, and I believe Mr. Martin talked about a reef. So, if you go to page 50, this is the paragraph that I like, the last one. So, "In summary, the Oak Island Beach Management main goal is to provide a framework and a roadmap for the town to restore and preserve the shoreline. Long-term plan will move us forward with less uncertainty, it will be proactive rather than reactive." I couldn't agree with all of that more. "It will incorporate many facets, aggressive planning, sand fence installation, natural dune building, incorporating multiple benefit projects, which you've just alluded to." Oh, it's the last sentence, "as well as innovative approaches that can be permitted." Is that the reef?
Right.
Is that the artificial? What else might that entail?
Right.
What are the other innovative things, is what I'm asking?
Sure. Well, again, currently, there's, you know, there's state law against any hard structures offshore except for terminal groins, so that would, you know, not allow us to use a reef that would probably be, you know, made of rock or some sort of hardened structure, but we could look at materials such as sand or, you know, other materials that the core might not otherwise utilize. So, you know, we're looking at doing things like that, you know, I would say, sort of other innovative approaches that we wanted to do, and again, we just haven't really been able to do that until we get the sand back into the system, is really doing a lot more aggressive vegetation planning and putting in sand fencing to build sort of incipient dunes out in front of the ones that we are currently building, just so that when events do come, that, you know, some of the lessons learned, we've learned up in other areas that we've worked, is that if we do that, then that will, you know, bear the brunt of a lot of the, even events during hurricanes, so that we don't end up, we're able to kind of hold in place what we have put out there, so...
Okay, and my email is full of discussions about naturalistic design, working with nature. I'm not sure exactly what that means. What's your understanding of that phraseology?
Sure. Well, you know, one of the things is, if we go back to where there's no channel on either side of us, if there wasn't a Wilmington Harbor Channel, there would be material that would be coming, sort of the natural longshore transport in this area is from east to west. So, you know, there's no doubt that the, you know, Oak Island has been impacted by even that channel, and that's one of the reasons why some of the other alternatives is, and David and I and others have talked about how we really need to get in and talk with the core and discuss how we need to be able to get more material out of that channel, because that would be more getting in line with the natural system. As far as the dune shapes and everything right now, I know that they're not very natural-looking, but that's just really, when you ask a contractor to come in and build these things, they're just not going to be able to put any of the indulations and anything else that we would like to see. That's where the vegetation and the sand fencing moving forward would be able to trap that sand and be able to build a more natural-looking feature, just so that it does not look so like a levee or whatnot. Other naturalized things that, again, we are talking to the core currently about regional sediment management, and, you know, some of those things might entail, you know, putting some of the material that is even offshore in some of the deeper reaches of the Wilmington Harbor Channel, that might have a little bit more fine material, well, it would still probably be useful for our beach and replicate the natural system that would be there if we didn't have the channel. So, you know, the goal is, as much as we can reconnect those sediment pathways, they might be sometimes through artificial means, but, you know, that would be one of the overall goals of sort of providing some nature-based, but a lot of that will be sort of due to the vegetation, and as well as we can get permitted some options to create some of that offshore berm or nearshore berms, you know, one of the things we kind of have to talk to the agencies about is, they're concerned about turbidity of any of these options that you put in, and putting in, there would probably be concerns about the turbidity of that option and being able to control it versus sort of the natural background turbidity in there. So, those are some of the heels that we're gonna have to kind of go over to answer agency concerns before we can be sure that we can get an option like that permitted. But, you know, I think this area's been so sand-starred for so long, as far as, you know, there was a lot of sand put out here 20 years ago, and then not much done, and so, we're kind of at a point now where we're trying to build back something to give us to work with, put sand in the system so that we can allow nature to kind of work this and reform it, but we gotta put enough sand back in the system for that to be able to happen.
Thank you. One last question, in 60 seconds, because the centerpiece of, you know, this contract is achieving an environmental impact statement. Can you talk about the significance of that, what it means, what it entails?
Sure.
Yes.
I'm gonna ask Dawn York to come up and help correctly with that, because she's our...
She has 60 seconds.
She talks faster than Johnny.
Yeah. Well, what I will say too is one of the reasons that we, an EIS is required versus an EA, like, if we were doing a one, if we were just doing one project and it was with one borrow source, you know, we could go with an EA, but the fact that we have multiple borrow sources, we're talking about taking material from frying pan shoals, which the agencies have already said, is a concern. There's the issue of the inlet management that we also want to fold into this overall plan, and you can ask about the terminal groin, but the fact that we're even considering a terminal groin, well...
Yes, Johnny's correct in all those facts, and as you know, in 2018, we had an early scoping meeting with some of the federal and state resource agencies, and at that point, an EIS was deemed to be required moving forward with any long-term plan such as this. So, there is federal guidelines, code of federal regulations that we do need to follow. An EIS is much more significant than an EA and will require studies and analyses of the human environment, as well as all the resources, so...
I want to thank both of you for your time. I'm gonna turn it over to the rest of council.
The terminal groin will require...
I'm sorry?
The terminal groin will require one.
Yeah, a terminal groin will require an EIS. I mean, that's a state rule.
Are they permitted in our state? Any of the innovative ideas that you've talked about, are they permitted?
As far as the nearshore berms and things of that nature, I mean, of course, there's offshore reefs that are used for fisheries habitat, but those are normally out in deep water, built with, you know, concrete rubble, I mean, they've sunk barges and things of that nature, but they're usually there to create some interest or some things to the bottom that will require fisheries habitat. So, you know, those have never really been moved inshore enough to where they could really provide enough wavebreak protection. Again, Councilman Martin and I were talking, and I was going over some of the things before this meeting, about what kind of depth we would need a nearshore reef or berm to be in in order to really be effective and break that wave energy. It would need to be somewhere between minus 10 to minus 20, and so, you know, that in itself creates some challenges about how you get the material, because these dredges draft 25 feet, so, you know, they're still gonna have to have pipeline to get to that point, to where they provide what we want to do. I mean, if you, I'll also provide you guys some literature searches on nearshore berms and what the core has been doing, but most of the time, they put it out in deeper water and can only fill up to 25 feet, and what they found is that most, most of the time, that material's fairly stable and doesn't really provide, you need to be in closer to shore to really provide that wave benefit that you want, but, no, they haven't really been, they have not been built yet in North Carolina, and so, we sent an email to Kevin Hart about, would this be even a consideration for the $20 million? And his response was, you know, for CSDM projects, we want, what we've always seen is beach nourishment, plantings, sand fencing. We would not approve anything that, we would likely not approve anything that would require a KAMA appeal where it had been denied, or a variance. So, we would have to see if we could talk about those options without a permit denial or a variance, then it might be on the table, but the read between the lines from Kevin was, move cautiously with that sort of approach.
Okay.
Especially for this direct grant.
Thank you.
Would the answer to that question optimistically be not yet?
I would. I mean, I'm hopeful, but, I mean, sure, I'm hopeful that, I mean, as we get into these things, if you look at what the Dutch and other people do, I mean, they do a process called rainbowing to where they actually drive the ship up, put an elbow at the end of the ship, and actually spray the material in and not have to worry about the pipelines, because that would be an operational issue, too. So, I mean, I've brought up some of those concepts before, and, you know, the comments I get back is, maybe down the road, but not yet.
Thank you.
But it doesn't mean that we can't continue to push, especially for later, down the road.
Well, in the benefit of a previous conversation that we had this afternoon about alternatives, I think it's important that we understand that when we use the term alternatives, we're not talking about alternatives as in, instead of placing sand on the beach. I think putting sand on the beach is important at this point, and the alternatives that we're talking about are really about preserving the sand that we do put on the beach. It's not instead of putting sand on the beach. I think that's important clarification as well. Anyone else?
One question real quick. Hi, Johnny.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, this is a contract we've already shook hands on, and now it's just time to sign it. Is that pretty much correct?
Yeah, we presented this last year, and it was already approved and in this year's budget. budget.
And, and all this is doing is the field studies and the EIS preparation, getting some permits and finding the sands. Anything that comes after that's a whole other story.
That's right. You're not, you're not making a decision night on what we ultimately build that, or, or, you know, if it moves forward to what is turned into FEMA, if anything. That's, those are two decision points further down the road.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, yes, sir. That's what we're here to do.
Any other discussion or questions?
I don't have a question for Mr. Martin. Just a point of comment that I'd like to make. First of all, when you hear Mr. Kelly or Councilmember Bach refer to Mr. Martin, there's nothing about that guy right there, not me. Just want to make sure y'all understand that. I was not involved in discussions back in 2018 around feasibilities and studies and all of that. So, more importantly, beginning in January, at our, our council meetings and then our special meeting that Councilmember Bach so graciously suggested that we have so we could start doing a little bit deeper digging, no pun intended, into this project. But and more importantly, get public feedback at these opportunities. And Councilmember Bach stated again this evening, please try to attend these special meetings where we're talking about beach nourishment because it is an opportunity for us to get input from you. What I will address is one term I've heard many, many, many times in these discussions for the last two months is we are here. That, that phrase is used every time we sit in a meeting and we look at this contract, which is labeled Phase Two, not to be confused with the next dune project that starts.
February 17.
So, we are here. And I just want to go on the record as saying, I applaud Moffett and Nichol to date because everything I have asked for, they have made a valiant effort to get it either in a deliverable or to address it in conversations, whether they be public conversations like this evening or one-on-one conversations between Mr. Martin and myself. So, by no fault of their own, they are making an effort to listen and to follow up. So, I'm grateful for their effort, including changes that they've made in the wording in this next proposal that's before us this evening. However, my discord is with we are here. Because when I hear we are here, we are here because of decisions that were made prior to our collective bodies coming together as a new town council for you. We are here because January 2017, I believe it was that you sent me the meetings, Town Council did approve a multi-phase, long-term contract with Moffett and Nichol, Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three. That's in those minutes of that meeting back in January 2017. All right? So, what that means is, and I appreciate the mayor setting the tone that Phase Three is undecided. I would contradict that and say, nope, Phase Three has also already been decided for us because it is in those minutes back in January 2017. So, as I continue to dig into our relationship with Moffett and Nichol, our beach nourishment issue, the work that everyone has been putting into this, more discovery is surfacing, if you know what I mean. So, here we are. And my problem is, we are here because of prior commitments from prior people in meetings and, and discussions and theories. We are here because things were set in motion back in 2017. Now, what do we do from here? We certainly have options in front of us to help define and refine the scope of work going forward. And I believe with all of my heart, that's what every single council member has been trying to do for the last couple of months, is we've been trying to work diligently at what the outcome may be. We are here, unfortunately, still unsure if the money is available to cover the cost of the project. So, therein lies another discord for me, at least. So, in summary, my problems still exist with things that were set in motion before our time and then things that are not in motion going forward. And you even heard Johnny and Dawn even say this evening, they have a great challenge ahead of them. There is a lot of unknowns. Even with the deliverables stated in this contract, they too are going into, no pun intended, uncharted waters with some of these, including inland management plans and the environmental impact statement and finding sand, right? These are all going to be significant challenges that we are asking them to do going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I too want to echo Councilman Martin's comments regarding how good Moffett and Nichol has been to work with. They have met every request that we've given of them, including when Mr. Bach and I asked them to put together an executive summary using layman's terminology so that we can enhance the ability to understand and digest exactly what the project is about, to take it out of the engineering terms and so that we can bring the community along with us in these discussions and these decisions. And I really appreciate all of your effort in helping us down this, you know, navigate this journey and appreciate the extra effort that you're making in, as we forward you questions and concerns from the community, that you've made every effort to pose those questions where they need to be placed and investigate them to explore the possibilities that are in front of us. So, I just want to also express my appreciation.
Thank you, guys. It's, we're here to serve you and which way you guys want to go.
Thank you. Is there a motion from council?
Yes, I'll make that motion. But I want to offer a brief repast to Mr. Martin just because I think this is an important discussion for us to have. We're all bound to certain degree by the history and prior decisions. Some of them were quite brilliant, underground utilities, brilliant foresight. Some of them, we pay for every month, not so brilliant, disastrous. And in between, a wide range of decisions. So, yeah, it's true, we are here. We have to exercise fully the options we now have. And that would be my point. So, I move to approve the contract with Moffett Nichols as presented.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Four to one. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny.
There will be more discussions to come as we, you know, beginning on February 21st. But I want to assure you that your concerns have not fallen on deaf ears, that we have taken what has been placed in our hands regarding not only just enhancing the understanding of the project and its impact on the town, both the risks and the benefits. We don't take that lightly and can assure you that we will bring the community along at every juncture to make sure that your voices are heard and represented as we move forward. Next item on the agenda, new business, and that's discussion of the Brunswick County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Mr. Blumer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the beginning of last year, Jake Vars presented the start of the study for the Brunswick County Comprehensive Transportation Plan to the Planning Board and Council. Today, I'll provide an update on where we are in the CTP process and what you can expect from the study in the following months. This information was presented to the Planning Board at their meeting last month, and they feel that the projects on 211 and Midway should be a priority in the list of projects that are presented. Brunswick County, its municipalities, Cape Fear Rural Planning Organization, GAS, ATS, Metropolitan Planning Organization, and the DOT have created a steering committee to start the Brunswick County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And the CTP is a 25 to 30-year long-range multimodal transportation plan that will assess Brunswick County's existing and future transportation needs, including roads, bicycle, pedestrian, transit, and rail facilities and services. The goals of a CTP are to assist with identifying transportation deficiencies, setting short and long-term transportation priorities, establishing a relationship between local and regional expectations, and to reinforce and support other local and regional planning and funding initiatives. There's a steering committee of local members from each adopting agency, as well as other local representatives that have been meeting since the beginning of last year, twice a month, to create this plan. Once the study is in draft format for adoption in the next few months, the council will be asked to review the CTP and adopt for the Town of Oak Island. The core content documented, the CTP, which consists of multimodal maps, a project list, and project sheets, is being reviewed by the steering committee, internal DOT, planning staff, and management. Once the review process is complete, the CTP will be going to the public for public input. The CTP Steering Committee will host both in-person public involvement sessions in the county as well as virtual meetings. Once public involvement sessions are completed, the steering committee will meet one more time to incorporate the feedback from locals. After that, the council will have a chance to review the draft CTP prior to going into adoptions. I request the council review the CTP. And if you have any comments, please provide those to me by February 15th. And if you have any comments, you may also submit them to Nasia Sardar or Kelly Jones from the DOT. And I will provide you their contact information at the end of the presentation. The last time Jake Vars presented to you, he informed you that there was a survey that would be available from March of 2021 through June 2021 for the CTP. We gathered a total of 6,969 virtual and physical surveys and a total of 8,387 comments from locals. This is the most feedback the Transportation Planning Division at DOT has gathered for a single-county CTP. Here's the contact information for the Steering Committee leads. As I mentioned in the previous slide, if you review the materials and wish to provide comments, reach out to Nasia and Kelly at the DOT's Transportation Planning Division. And you are also welcome to contact me or Patrick Flanagan at the RPO with any questions or concerns. And Patrick Flanagan isn't here tonight, so he could flesh out CTP a little more for you and answer any questions you may have about the plan or where the plan is heading for the future.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you all for giving me a little bit of time. First, I just kind of want to open it up to your questions. If anybody has any questions right now at this point on what Mark just informed you of.
How are these individual plans that make up the comprehensive plan, more specifically the bicycle and pedestrian plan that's in our packet on page 94, how are they being rated for prioritization? I understand highway growth or improvements are usually at the top of the list to alleviate congestion or to make thoroughfare travel easier. However, I believe that at least from a Town of Oak Island perspective, we have prioritized at the retreat pedestrian accessibility and safety as, and as well as bicycles or greenways or, all of those are now on the table. So, I would be curious to find out how we either lobby or get a vote in to try to, you know, elevate the bicycle and pedestrian plan into some sort of priority review with the, with the comprehensive transportation plan.
Sure. Okay. So, I'm going to also address the Planning Board comments with your question here. So, the first thing to know is that the Comprehensive Transportation Plan itself does not prioritize projects. This is the, we're putting everything that we see as a need through the analysis, as well as requests from the local areas of what their transportation needs, they feel they are beyond what the data may be telling us. So, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan is, is everything included. And we don't use this document to do any sort of, we want the 211 project before we want this project or that project. This is just the wish list, if you will. So, you take all that, put it together, and then you set that to the side for a second. And NC DOT has a data-driven, by law, process they use to evaluate transportation projects that are looking to get funded. And they refer to that as spot or prioritization. And so, that process itself is multimodal, where every mode of transportation in North Carolina is competing against each other for funding. So, your aviation projects, your ferry projects, your bicycle, pedestrian, highway, rail transit are all competing for funding through a data-driven process. And so, each mode has different criteria that they're measured on. You mentioned the highway stuff and congestion, benefit, cost, and there's nine things to choose from that these things are measured on. And so, the bicycle and pedestrian projects also have things that they're measured on, safety, density of commercial and residential, and a number of other factors. So, each mode gets prioritized based on these data points. Every project in the entire state receives a score, and then the highest scoring projects get funded. Now, through that process, there is two places really where local entities through the MPOs and RPOs can influence that process. And the first is which projects get submitted to be prioritized and go through this data-driven process. And so, the RPO will meet, we cover three counties, portions of Brunswick, portions of Fender, and Columbus County, will meet, will look at all the adopted plans and say, okay, you know, which ones do you guys want to see submitted to potentially get funded? What are your most important needs? And that's the first time where we really kind of prioritize the big bucket of projects from all the plans in the area. And so, that process happens through that, the RPO or the MPO. They get submitted to NC DOT, keeping in mind that there is a limit on the number of projects that we can submit for each round of, of funding. And then, once everything receives a data score, the MPOs and RPOs get together again, and we now have a, a chance to influence the score where we can take points that were given allotted from DOT in a limited number and apply them to the projects that we want to see have their scores boosted. NC DOT, the division engineers, your local DOT engineer, also gets points that they're prioritizing the projects in their area with. And so, that's how we get to, which projects are we submitting? You know, how are we prioritizing those? Which ones we want to go into the next round? And once those are scored, which ones do we want to apply our points with to boost their score to make them more competitive in trying to get funding?
Does it provide a benefit if we were to develop and share on a smaller scale the work that we may approve? You know, coming out of our retreat, we're going to have some smaller scopes of work that we might be able to accomplish within the next budget year so they'll be funded. But these projects could be anything from some additional sidewalk improvements that we've already got in this year's budget to a greenway or to maybe some bicycle lane or something. If we come out of our retreat with these smaller scopes of work and they're funded in future budgets, would that provide any benefit for us to share that as an overview of what we're willing to do on a more local level and how it might feed into a larger plan? Does that? Does that weigh at all in consideration?
Not in the sense that you're asking. However, one of the things that bicycle and pedestrian projects are measured on is, are they connecting to an already-existing network? So, the more segments that you build, then we submit something that connects to the segments you just built, and now it's scoring higher because it's not just a sidewalk in the middle of nowhere, it's expanding an existing network. And in particular, if you can fill in the middle gap, now you have connections on either end and you're scoring higher. So, there's little things like that that would help a project score better.
That's all for me.
Anyone else?
No, just for the public, if you're interested, page 100, Mark mentioned page 94, which is aligned with one of our goals from the retreat, but also page 100, which is the Middleton, 133, 102, which is Midway Road, page 110, Long Beach Road, and page 117 is public transportation in general, but specifically to the island. So, those are all island-specific. I'll call them promissory plans, that's really what they are. You might want to look at those. They're all right here.
Thank you. Good point.
So, again, I just want to echo that we're getting to the public involvement stage with all these recommendations. We wanted you guys to have a chance to look at them and provide us feedback, but also so that you've seen them, you're somewhat familiar with them when we go into public involvement, and your citizens start asking you questions about the plans, you've got a little bit of background, you know who to contact if you need help with answering a question or anything. But we'd love to hear your feedback. If there's anything missing, if there's a transportation need that you don't see there that you think should be included, if there's little changes that need to be made to the recommendations, you know, we're still very much in the development process of this. So, we welcome any and all comments from you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Blumer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution declaring the intention to close a portion of Northeast 54th Street, the street end north of Yacht Drive. Mr. Eads.
Madam Mayor and council, this particular street end has a history of, how can I say this, differences of opinion between the town and the Dutchman Creek HOA dating back well over 20 years, things such as a fence being at the end of that street end, who's responsible for bulkhead repair after, particularly after storms, things of that nature. We announced at the last meeting that we have reached a tentative settlement with Dutchman Creek, or not tentative of settlement. Part of that settlement entails the town going through the statutory procedure to close that street end. They own both sides of the street, and when a street, portion of the street is closed, title to that closed portion divest down the center line to the adjacent property owners. Since they own both sides, they'd own that little chunk in exchange, they would be conveying to the town two lots in that area adjacent to our existing public boat launch, and the value of those two lots is estimated in excess of $300,000. So, right now, if, as this settlement gets consummated, the town would utilize those two lots to facilitate the existing boat ramp down the road. The council certainly could entertain selling those lots or doing something else within that zoning with those two lots. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-299, the first step in closing a street is to draft, or excuse me, to pass the intent that's before you tonight. I think, believe we did, the last one we did, I believe, was in 2016, and that's the backdrop for this. This has been a problem or a disagreement that predates my being town attorney, which I think's going on 15, 16 years. It's almost 30 years old. And I think, all things considered, this is a very good deal for the citizens of the town. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Mr. Kelly, do we have plans for the property that they're conveying?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be, a parking lot will go in there right now for the boat ramp, and that's what we're looking at constructing on that site currently.
So, it would certainly expand the parking that's available, which is very limited at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We would be reserving stormwater utility easement in that section because we do have stormwater utilities going through that section. So, this part, if, after the hearing, the council elects to adopt an order closing the street, part of that order would reflect our reservation of that easement.
Mr. Eads, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Someone mentioned it before, "Setting a precedent." This is not setting a precedent.
Well, like I said, we closed the street end in 2016, and I've been involved with some, it's not a legally binding precedent. Anytime you do something, someone can say, "Well, you did it over there or here." In this particular situation, given the history of the street end, I would say it's unique and would not even set a non-binding legal precedent. And if you look at a value exchange, I think the town is coming out from a monetary perspective ahead. And it will enhance an existing water access. As the mayor just pointed out, it will provide more parking for that existing boat launch.
Mr. Kelly, does this impede the flow of traffic on Yacht Drive?
Not at all. They already park in the right-ofways, and now we'll do away with some of the right-ofway parking.
I think it'll help.
And we can get them out of the right-ofway and put them in a parking lot.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
The chain link fence is still erected on the street, correct? They didn't, they haven't removed it?
They took it down, but I think it's back up probably two or three weeks ago.
And that, again, that, historically, I believe the evidence will be that it's been there for quite some time.
At least 30 years.
Is there a motion from council?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution of intent that Oak Island Town Council to consider the closing of the street end at Northeast 54th Street, area of Northeast 54th of Yacht Drive, and to schedule a public hearing for April 12th at 6:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as possible.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? It passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Please put April 12th on your calendars.
It's a council meeting?
It is. It's the regular council meeting? Regular council meeting. Thank you.
Due to the advertising requirements, we couldn't bring it back in March. That's why it's in April.
Okay. Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
You've got the floor.
I'll say this quick, and we can go home, folks.
Not yet.
We live in paradise, and everybody thinks we live in paradise. I want to have a way to honor those people who take the extra measures to enhance our town. And sometimes, more than just a thank you is needed to match the impact of the person's efforts. I make a motion to initiate a key to the town and citizen recognition program and start the process of studying the criteria.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Yeah, second?
I'll second.
And all in favor?
I'd like to amend the motion.
I was this close.
I think the concept is excellent. We don't often take time to recognize success. I'm struck by the last sentence, though, that there should be a set of guidelines or qualifications. And so, I'd like those to be developed, Councilman, and when you bring that back, I'll gladly vote for it.
Well, that means it might be four to one, because I said, "And start the process of studying the criteria."
Well, I think process is important and proceeding thoughtfully is important. I like the idea, but I'd like to see the guidelines. I don't want to vote against something that's so worthy, but I think the guidelines should be before council, before we vote for it. That's all. It's a procedural concern.
His motion said to start the process of...
Developing guidelines?
Developing guidelines.
So, guidelines will therefore be coming back to us? Fine, I'll support that.
Isn't that what you said?
That's exactly what I said.
Okay. All right. Subject to guidelines being received.
It's fast, it's bad, though.
Do we have to second your amended motion?
I'll second his. With that clarification, I'll second his.
There was a second already.
Was there? For the amendment?
Okay.
I don't think it's amended, I think it's clarified, Mayor.
Clarified. Thank you. Okay. All in favor? And opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you for that suggestion. There are so many wonderful things that go on in this town. Saturday, the Be the One events at the breakfast, and then the gala that afternoon at 8:01 is just one example of the wonderful things that go on in our community to support one another. So, thank you for bringing that to the table. I very much appreciate it.
I make a motion. We adjourn.
We have a closed session? We have a closed session.
That was put on as a placeholder. We don't need one, Mayor.
We don't? Excellent. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for staying through a very long meeting. It's very much appreciated.